Hi Mike.
Well, good morning.
Good morning. You're not out of town.
Dylan, you look like a beetle.
I will be.
Like one of the beetles.
He does. He's got, he's getting a hairdo, he's getting a hairdo.
I like it.
It's a good looking one.
That's funny. Okay. I'm gonna try to share my screen with you guys and tell you what I've done so far and I'm anxious to get your input and, and feedback. So, anyway, let me see if I can't share my screen with you. Okay.
Looks good.
Can y'all see this?
Yes.
Good. Okay, so what I've done here is, is these are the slides we'll use for presenting to council. And, and just to ref, oh, I can see already, I mean, anyway. What I did is I, I, I cut and pasted the slides we used last year into this year and my, my plan is to revise them and what I've done is revise them some as we go along, but there was, there were some things that I weren't clear about that I wanted to discuss with you guys. So everything is in red are things that I've added and I have two slides of that, so that's all. Don't, don't feel like there's too much there. So my first question is what I'd like to do is just go through this line by line and Mike or whoever can tell me if this has been completed now. And if it, if it has, it'll, I'm gonna take it out, okay? If that makes sense.
Yes. First off, you got some corrections to make that in the upper left-hand corner where it reads 2019.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay. I just saw that myself. Okay. So are we done with the Kevin McGrew?
I, I would label that a yes. Pending recording. And, but instead of accomplishment to date, they at least completed and executed by owner, that would be under the accomplishment column.
Okay. Okay. That's completed. Needs to be filed, though.
Yes, and, and, and refer to it as a negotiated open space and conservation.
Come on, you. I don't know why that should. I, I, I don't have that room for that kind of language, but.
Delete, delete lease. And delete.
I'm just gonna put complete.
Completed. I, I think you need to refer to the fact it's an easement, so I mean, you're gonna have to refer to it as an open space or a conservation. I would just call it an open space easement. It's not really clear what, what we bought here.
Oh, okay. So, I, I'm, I'm trying to use the same language year to year.
Well, yeah, but you, you're not really describing what it is. I would just refer to as a completed open space easement.
Okay. Okay. Oklahoma?
Completed, it needs to be corrected.
Corrected?
Yeah. C O M P O E T E D, completed. In the first column, Nancy.
I see, I see. I'm not good at doing this under pressure.
In front of an audience.
Right. Really bad. Okay.
All right.
Okay, this is done.
Use my N at the end. It's M E N T.
I know that.
I know you knew that.
Okay, so. Can we move on to Oklahoma Road? Did it, did, this didn't cost us anything. Right?
Actual cost was zero. It was a gift. And, and also is a five-year term. I don't know if you want to add that anywhere.
Not really.
Maybe under the third column, accomplish, accomplishment to date, also add five-year term.
Okay. Oklahoma. God damn, why does this keep shrinking? Okay. Oklahoma.
I don't know what that is.
Don't either.
Oklahoma Road Lot 7.
Let me check, let me look real quick.
Okay. Training, we had budgeted. We haven't spent anything. Nobody went. That kind of thing. Intimate trail reroute. We did that. It didn't cost us anything close to that. I can't remember. If somebody can remember offhand, Shannon, you can probably remember what we ended up paying Shanti for timbers and that kind of stuff.
I remember we said 600. I don't remember the $10,000. I think it was a $600 budgeted and.
Okay, yeah, that was budgeted with him, but this was just, that, that actually is our total.
But I think we paid, what did we pay? It was over a thousand, right Dylan? Do you know, who wrote that check?
I, I did. I'm trying to look it up right now.
Okay.
I wanna say it was like double that.
1,200. Okay.
Oh. Okay. I got an explanation on that previous one.
Oklahoma Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, let's see here, let's say I got title now. The title's in the name of Red Rock now, so Red Rock needs to now transfer title to the city. Your, your cost on that's gonna be far less than $10,000.
Yeah, it's so, so, yeah. Keep in mind, this was long before we knew much about it.
Right.
So the total cost for the intimate reroute was $1,008.97.
Okay, rounding it up. Whoops. Okay. Um, Dylan, while you're looking costs up, can you look what we've paid so far for the signage?
Yes.
So you guys realize that column E is just the source of funding, that those are the budget line items in our budget. So that's that. Get down. Put this dog out. Okay, um, so signage, Iron Mountain Management Plan isn't, isn't complete. That's the one you're, you're working on Shannon, right?
Right.
Black Canyon Cultural Assessment is not complete, correct? Actually, we can change these budget.
Why don't you say under Black Canyon, state permit renewed? Just so they know we're something on it.
State permit needed?
The renewed.
Oh, okay.
I think that was back in February of 21, 2020.
And we don't have any cost on this either, do we?
Now just leave it as is.
Okay.
All right, let's go back up to Oklahoma.
Okay.
Put no completed, no. And then, and the third column, say no pending transfer from seller.
No.
It's gonna be less than five grand too Nancy.
Okay.
I don't have a, I don't have the final cost calculated yet.
Okay, well, I'll just put it a lot less or?
Yeah, put about less than five grand.
Well.
I don't even think it's gonna be that.
Well, just give me a number to put in there. Four grand?
Put, put four grand.
Okay. Great. Okay.
So I, I gotta figure for the signage so far.
Okay.
That's 7,860 so far.
Okay. So we're hoping to, yeah.
We'll come in probably right around that $10,000 mark.
Okay, great. I'm gonna leave it then. Okay, um you can see. Um, let's go to the next slide. The other, the other thing on this slide is I added that, that we applied for this GOCO grant. And that kind of feeds into the next. Actually, if I were to label this, I would label, you know, 2021 plan or goals or something like that, which I might do. So, um, but, but actually, this is a continuation of accomplishments. So we, we closed that Iron Mountain Rogue Trail at the base of Crystal Park Road. It costs 250 bucks. The Intimate Trail, I'm calling them washouts. I don't know what else to call but the two big areas that Shanti's group built the retaining walls for, et cetera, to save that tread. Tread is another thing that got accomplished this year. We did the trail maintenance evaluation on all trails and that was carried out by the committee. That was completed and recorded. We still, in the coming year, we talked about doing it this year, is coming up or beginning at least the management plans for all the small discreet open spaces. We have some preliminary mapping by Dylan and that's about it. The Intimate Stairs Reclamation, we haven't done, but it's in the GOCO grant. And right now, we just have a $2,900 grant for that match if we get it. And then general Intimate Trail Maintenance, Erosion Control, et cetera, which is also in the grant. So I'm, I'm, any other goals for 2021 or accomplishments for 2020 that haven't been included in either of these slides, I'd love to hear about.
Yes. In 2020, we negotiated and completed temporary easements for both Eagle Mountain and Red Mountain. There were two of them negotiated and recorded two temporary easements.
Do you want me to separate them to different lines?
Yeah, I'm pulling up the information right now if you want. We can do them separately.
One is Red Mountain?
Yeah. And the other one's red, the other one is Eagle Mountain.
Okay.
What, what, let's see, what, what do you got on that? Yeah.
They didn't cost anything or did they?
Yeah, those were freebies. All right. And those tasks were completed around in July, July of 2020. So what else do we need on that?
I'll fill in, I'll fill in the line items. It'll be, the line item will be under our acquisition line item.
Yeah, let's clarify that. That's temporary trail easements instead of just temporary easements.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to include it, but someone did some clearing up on Eagle Mountain.
No.
Without even our knowledge, but we're still grateful for that.
Yeah, it's not our accomplishment.
Did we ever figure out who removed all that barbed wire fence that was up there? What's that?
Fence very.
Not that I know of.
I'm wondering if it's the same people who removed that that have done some of the other stuff, maybe.
I carried the post down.
Does anyone know if those have been picked up and removed yet?
Yeah, they're, I think they're all gone. Last time I was up there, I do, I believe, I could be making that up. I don't know. I don't remember seeing, they're gone. The posts are gone. I think there was some wire left.
Okay.
I talked to Ronnie and he does a lot of scrapping. And he was gonna, I think he took the post to scrap them out, recycle them.
Oh, good. That's great. Okay, um, can we print these?
Should we put something in there like ongoing search for real estate and then maybe the ongoing quest for a connection to Waldo Canyon?
Yes, I can do that.
I don't mean, I don't know, because I mean, we basically want to pump this up to make it look like we're doing more than what happened, right?
Well, you guys have actually done quite a lot this year.
No, no, yeah, I know, I'm not. But we want to make, we want, we definitely want to.
Yeah, we want to, we want to show them what our goals are. I'll tell you what, I can't, I can't cut and paste this together right now.
But honestly, we don't really have to because we have dedicated funding.
Right, okay. Say what you just said, though, connection.
I, yeah, I don't know how to word it. I'm just like something about how we're doing ongoing
To.
Going search for purchases of OSAC property and then separately, an ongoing
Right.
Dream of Waldo Canyon Connection.
We have, I'll tell you how I'll talk about it is, is I've, I've got Becca working on a you know, balance at the end of the year, expected revenue for the coming year, carryover, et cetera. And, and then the council always says, what are you doing with all that money, you know?
Okay.
And my response is, and I can, I can put some of those line items in here. So, you know, we have everything from you know, 10, 10,000, $100,000 in the land purchase line item. So, so.
So when they ask that question, you show them this document.
Right, I can show them something of the coming year. They'll have the coming year budget in them. And they'll see a line item for $100,000 for land acquisition and a line item for $50,000 for grant matches. So just, just between us, the $100,000 is for land acquisition. We can add the, the $50,000 had in mind our match for any creek walk.
Right.
Acquisition, the serpentine and, and that 150K obviously can be combined or moved around depending on what, you know, something that becomes available.
Right.
Either as creek walker the other way. So, so we, we definitely can talk about that. They'll have the budget in front of them. So they'll want to know, you know, what are, and we can, I will add those two things, you know? Connection to Black Canyon and, and ongoing, I don't want to say search, but ongoing.
Yeah, something. I don't, I don't know. Quest.
Yeah.
Not only looking at connection, but you, you might possibly be looking at trail construction relative to the Black Canyon Connection.
Uh huh.
So I mean, we're, we're along in that process. It's a matter of revising survey to identify the location of the roadway. And so I mean, I think you would want to include cost for any survey revisions and I would.
Oh, right, survey.
I would add another maybe three grand for that. It, it won't cost that much.
Okay. Okay, I can do that. All right. I mean, what we're doing here kind of is some informal goal setting for 2021, but I don't, I I think that's good. I don't think it is going to be that different. Even if we were to meet in our retreat in January. I think one of the big pieces of progress I think we've made is surveying all the trails and getting that all into the spreadsheet that Andrea's maintaining around trails and allowing us to, you know, prioritize the various trail maintenance issues that we know we have.
And it's kind of in real time, too.
Pardon?
It's kind of in real time. You can add to it and subtract from it as we, as storms come in and as things happen.
Exactly, exactly. But at least we've got a starting point, a baseline on a lot of this stuff. And then it's kind of up to the committee to prioritize. Although everyone's prioritized in their reports, one, two, or three priority, we can look at that.
Well, right now, you know, our city administration seems to be ahead of the curve on the Waldo Canyon Connection. I've had discussions with Denise Howe concerning that conduct, connection. And there seemed to be high interest in that project. Let's put it that way. I think we need to make it a higher priority on our end as well.
Okay, I'll stick that in there as a line. You know, we, we don't know the bud, what budget other than the survey part for $3,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to throw trail construction in there yet for that project.
Sounds good. Makes it sound good.
Yeah.
Trail construction on Black Canyon property? Adds detail.
Yeah, with, it's, yeah, it's part of the Waldo Canyon Connection. And, and the trail construction extends from Black Canyon over, over lands owned by Cedar Heights.
Right, well, and we're gonna need, we're gonna need trailhead construction services, parking, all that we haven't figured out either.
Also, this administration has placed such a high importance that they're looking at having parking, the parking revisions on their traffic study to accommodate to, to, to come up with some proposals for parking along.
Up Cedar, up that Cedar Heights Road?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, good. I think it's good for them to know that we're, you know, that we've got our eye on that for sure. I think, you know, I always preface this budget report that, you know, OSAC feels that we, we need to stay nimble. We never know when a piece of property is going to come up that we'd like to add or that would be important to add to our open space. And, and so that's why they see, you know, they don't see more specific or more specificity in a lot of our budget line items because we've just, you know, in some, to some extent, we're at the mercy of what's going on real estate wise in our area. Opportunities come up, that kind of thing, so.
That's exactly right Nancy, because now we've been requested by council to hold money's escrow for the purchase of act acquiring the creek walk properties.
Right, right. And we will, we'll, we'll let them know that. I mean, I'll kind of preface it with that. The other thing, another good example of our, of needing to, you know, remain nimble or, or how we're at the mercy of others is, is our trail maintenance budget. So right now, if we get that $29,000 grant from GOCO, you know, we'll have, we'll get $29,000 worth of manpower, you know, doing a lot of the maintenance projects we want to do on Intimate Trail and the reclamation of the stairs and all that kind of stuff. If we do not get that grant, those things remain on our list and it's going to, you know, if you want to proceed with it, it's going to come directly out of our budget. We're gonna have to hire crews or hire organizations to complete that work at the cost of at least $29,000. So until we know we've got the grant, you know, we don't, we can only budget it the way I've got it down here. It's gonna be somewhere between third, you know, zero and $30,000 to do Intimate Trail Maintenance, depending on whether we get the grant or not. So, does that make sense?
Yeah.
But the big, the big thing is, is I wanted to see if there were any remaining things that we accomplished this year or that we know is up top for next year. I'll add all this business about Black Canyon and trail construction and survey into this.
Do we have, do we have all Shanti's stuff on here?
Yeah, it's all under Intimate Trail Washouts.
Okay.
He, you know, he still wants to add rock, but he want, doesn't want to add it until next spring after he sees how it does in the summer. And I think that was just about 1,500 bucks. So you know, we're really spending pennies compared to what we've got in the budget, but that's good. Because we know, we know we're probably gonna be hit up for some of the serpentine issues, property issues with Creek Walk. And who knows what's gonna happen with Black Canyon? And anything else that could, could come up at any time.
Got a revision.
Okay.
You had Lot 7 of best view subdivision, I think it was on the first page.
Yeah, Oklahoma Road Lot 7.
All right, Lot 7 Block, best view add, and then put and Lot 24 comma Block 19 block, block 19.
Block 19.
19. Okay, comma, Peak View Addition. Or you just put Peak View.
Okay. Okay. Good.
Change, change budgeted to five instead of four. I think that, it'll be still less than that.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Good. Anything else? So I'm, I'm, let me see if I can share this with you. I'm no, I don't have it. Heart helps if I open it. Never mind. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking Becca to do a simplified, like I said, just current, current balance. What we anticipate our carryover will be at the end of 2020. What she projects our 2020 or 2021 revenue to be and what our new bottom line is, which I expect to be somewhere around 250K.
Okay.
And it's been about the, the amount we've been carrying forward. We still have, you know, there's still a line item in there for administrative support for about 10K. It was nine last year, I think. And that's it. I think between Michael and I, we can answer any questions, council. Are you gonna be there on the fourth, Mike?
Yeah, I can make it.
Okay.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, I don't have an exact time, but.
Is, is there any word as to whether that's in person or by Zoom? I would imagine it's by Zoom.
Oh, it probably is by Zoom. Dylan, when I have this finished, I'll send it to you and if you can cut and paste it into that form. That template, that's not much of a template.
Yeah, it's been added to the last few days. So I'll add to the current one, but yeah, the sooner the better.
Okay, I'll get it done today.
Label this Exhibit A and then on the forms just say refer to Exhibit A.
I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll call this document that you have on the screen Nancy, Exhibit A. Then on the blank form, you just say, please refer to Exhibit A. And you're done.
No, we've got to use the, we've got to use the template that council wants us to use. I mean, we can just cut and paste this whole format into that.
Right.
But. yeah, we can't mess around with their format, which.
Well, we're not. We're just referring to an exhibit.
We spend lots of money doing some city branding, so.
Yeah. It's got to go in there, but I, you know, I'm only allowed a maximum of four slides. So if I get Becca's slides and these two, great, we'll come in one under, so.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Nancy, do you, do you and I need to meet again before the fourth? Maybe we'll just have a phone conversation.
Yeah.
Presentation.
I think, I think so. I'll let you know. You're going to be around till then.
Yeah, I won't be in town, but but I'll be around.
Okay.
I'm in communication.
Okay, good. Well, that was short and sweet, you guys. Thank you. Do you have any additional thoughts?
Good job, Nancy.
Give me a call, let me know.
Thank you, Nancy.
Betcha. We'll see. I'll clean this up and add, add your input and turn it all into one color, et cetera, et cetera. Change the headings for the titles and, yeah, in the year.
Nancy, if you want, after you finish making the revision, send it to me and I can comment if needed.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dylan, we'll get, I'll get this to you. Today's Friday. Yeah, if not, if not, well, it'll probably be today. If not today, it'll be Monday for sure.
Okay, I think Monday is probably the latest.
Okay, okay, I'll get to work.
All right, thanks, guys.
Good job, everyone.
You guys have a good one.
Thank you, Nancy. Bye bye now.
Bye.